The 11/29/2017 Heinsburg Planning Commission meeting to order. So, first order of business as usual is any changes to agenda? I don't have anything. Anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move on to public comments for non-agenda items. Johanna, I believe you're probably just here for the meeting.
I'm just enjoying your company.
Just enjoying the company.
You don't want to just have your moment in the spotlight? The cameras are on. You get five minutes.
You're the first visitor we've had in, I don't know how many meetings.
Come the new year, I'm going to do a couple of front porch forum posts just about that. Hey, did you know that you get five minutes of time at the Planning Commission? Just come and you can sound off about anything.
If we approve lit, internally lit signs out in the front or neon or something, they can flash when there's a meeting.
That would be cool, wouldn't it?
Do you like this or should it be outlawed?
All right, well, let's move on to capital budget input.
So, as I explained in my email regarding this meeting's agenda and packet, the Select Board discussed just very preliminarily the capital budget, which is a look forward in time of spending, planned spending on capital items for the next six years. And it gets updated each year. And we do it as a part of the annual operating budget discussions. So, they had their first opening salvo on that. And several of them said, "We'd like to get more feedback going forward from other committees like the Planning Commission. We'd like to, we just adopted a new town plan. We'd like to take a look at that and see if there are recommendations or ideas in it that we should really be setting aside money for or thinking about spending money on into the future." So, I thought, hey, this is a good meeting to do that because the Select Board will be talking about the capital budget again in a more substantive way in mid-December. I forget which meeting it is, 11th or 18th. So, their hope is that not all this year, but between this year and next year, they can sort of tune up the capital budget a little bit more and be more proactive about establishing reserve funds for each of our municipal buildings so that we have, we're putting some money aside for replacing windows and roofs and furnaces and things which we haven't been doing. And they'd also like these other potential elements to at least get discussed, even if they don't make it into the budget. So, I sent you the current version of the capital budget, which is the starting place for all of this. And it was, we've had, we've done capital budgeting in Heinsburg for decades, but we've done it more formally since 2008, I think it was. Technically, you're supposed to go through a formal approval process and the capital budget is supposed to look and feel a certain way if you want to be eligible to charge impact fees. So, when we first started charging fire and police impact fees in 2009, they were based on our first sort of formalized capital budget. And since then, I think after we adopted that first formalized one, we sort of let it sit for the six-year period without even modifying it. And then, it had to be tuned up in a big way for the next period. Since then, we've been, we've had a better understanding that we should be modifying it and re-adopting it annually. So, each year, you know, the last year of the six falls off. You add a new year, think about it some more, and have a formal public hearing in January and adopt it. And then, it can go in the town report as something that the voters don't actually vote on, but they're made aware that we are looking forward and these are what, this is what we think we're going to be spending money on. So, with that in mind, the materials I sent you were last year's capital budget that will be, is going to be tuned up for this coming year. And it includes a narrative that's rather lengthy of each of the items and what they are and how much we're supposed to spend and when. And then, some spreadsheets that show the same thing, but in a slightly more, well, hopefully more readable, maybe not with the font size, breaking down by department and by year. So, in addition to those documents, I gave you a four-pager that statewide Land Use Education Group put together many years ago about what capital budgeting is all about. If you had a chance to look at that, you may have already seen it in the past. And what I'd like to hand out to you now, which I didn't put in your packets because I hadn't had a chance to sort of think about it, is a summary I did of all of the action items in the town plan that had a capital budget item next to them checked off. So, what I've been doing over the last week or so is creating separate, taking our implementation table from the plan, got it in an Excel spreadsheet, so it's easy to sort, and doing the same thing that I did for one of your past meetings for all the other boards, just clipping out the action items that each of those boards are the lead entity on, and then sending it to them and saying, "Here's what the town plan says your board should be working on over the next five to eight years." And saying, "I'd like to come and meet with you in the beginning of 2018 so we can chat about that." In that process, just today, I was like, "Well, I want to walk through all the action items, 200 and some odd of them, and see which ones, you know, are capital budgety and maybe we should be thinking about." And then, I'm like, "Oh, well, we already did that to some degree because in each of the items in the table from, we indicated who's responsible, whether it was staff or volunteer time, whether it should be an annual budget item, whether it should be a capital budget item, and whether we'd get the resources through grants and other funding." So, here, take one and pass it around. This is, these are just the action items that we check the capital budget column for.
My question, I mean, you'd already put in the narrative, for example, Lot 1. So, but is that, that's just a placeholder?
Because not only haven't we talked about what it's going to cost, we don't have any estimates, we don't have...
Well, we did get an estimate. You'll notice that many of the items in the narrative are very much placeholders. There's no dollar amount associated with them and the time horizon says to be determined.
So, we're not just going to transfer all of these into the capital budget?
Well, so, we could, the Select Board, with your recommendations, could do any number of things. You want to hand that one to Joe? One thing would be to say, "Hey, look, here are all the capital budget items from the plan. Just stick them in the narrative as placeholders. And then, when we come up with cost estimates through feasibility studies or we come up with a real time horizon, we'll fill that in and they'll hit the spreadsheet with an actual time horizon associated with them." That would be one way to do it. I wouldn't recommend that way. There's a lot of items in here. The other way would be to pick and choose the items that we think are in, are coming up in the next five to 10 years and that we have some grasp of what they might cost and put those in the narrative. So, Lot 1, for example, we had a landscape architectural firm, the SC Group, I believe, do...
As part of the public facility.
John was involved in that, as that whole public facility thing. And they came up with a very robust, at least on the dollar side, landscaping plan with a budget and cost and all of that.
...
I tried to find that on the site some time ago.
I could get it to you. I don't think it exists on the website anymore because that project was from so long ago. But, we could drop that estimate into the capital budget and then, you know, have the Select Board talk about, is that the right number? And when does the town actually anticipate doing that? Is it in the next six years? Should it be in the capital budget from the firm's six-year horizon? Or is it one of these like 10-year-out, 20-year-out kind of an item? Some of these other ones that you'll see in this excerpt of the implementation table, we don't have, we don't have an estimate for. So, where's...
There has to at least have been some kind of a conversation, I would think, about some of this stuff.
Well, I think there've been conversations at the Planning Commission. So, for example, on page one, item number 5.6.2, it's the second from the bottom on page one. It says, "Continue to identify and construct municipal stormwater treatment infrastructure." And all the boxes on the right are checked. We say, "That's going to be staff and volunteer time. It should be part of our annual budget." And it needs a capital, it should be in our capital budget as well. Plus, we're going to want to go get grants.
Plus, the Select Board is the lead.
True. So, that's an item where we've done some study. We know in the greater village area, I think 10 or 11 hotspots that would be good places to do stormwater treatment. Myron and McBroom did that study for us three or four years ago now. And we had a cost estimate, preliminary cost estimate for one of them, which is a secondary treatment area below the rain gardens over at the community school. But, the other 10 items, we don't have cost estimates for. We just know that there's the location and it's a good place to do something. So, with regard to the capital budget, we could actually put specific, a specific project in the capital budget, like the secondary treatment area that we have the cost estimate for near the school. Or, we could, you know, we could recognize that this is something we should be budgeting for, but we need to do more work to come up with dollars. So, we need to pick another site and actually have somebody help us come up with a design. You do need, you do need to have some information before you can just throw things in the capital budget. You have to know what you want to do. You have to know about what it's going to cost. And you got to know approximately when you think you're going to do it. And I think the Select Board right now just wants to have a more robust conversation of what we're missing and what should go into the budget. And maybe we don't have all the information we need to put all these items in this year, but perhaps this will be the impetus to get better information so we can start adding more of these next year or in the years that follow. There are also, you know, there's also ways to just start saving for things that we know we're going to, cost centers that we know we're going to spend money on. So, as I mentioned, the Select Board indicated some interest in establishing a reserve for each municipal building, like the town hall, the highway garage, the police station, the fire station, and start putting some money aside towards capital expenses that we know are going to come down the road, replacing a furnace, replacing a roof. Maybe there are some items in the plan, like stormwater treatment and infrastructure, that we don't have a firm cost on yet, but we know we're going to be having to spend money on additional infrastructure in the future. And we want to recommend that there be a reserve fund set up and we start putting money in it out of the annual budget that the taxpayers approve each year to build the fund to get us close so that maybe we have enough money for a local match to go for a grant without having to say, "Well, we don't have any money for match." Or, or to actually just outright pay for something.
You had explained, like, maybe at last meeting or meeting before, about how to set money aside and assign it to a project. And there was a time limit and then the money had to be given back. And there were a number of items associated with reserve funds.
Only with regard to impact fees.
Impact fees, right.
So, when we collect impact fees, they're, it's a time-limited collection. If you don't use them within the six years, they go back.
Whether it's going into a reserve fund for a particular item or whether...
Regardless, it's the collection mechanism that requires the return. For the taxpayers to simply, as a part of the annual budget, to allocate $2,000 for a future roof replacement on this building, that never has to go back. That can go into a reserve and sit there for 20 years. And we could put 2,000 a year for 20 years if we wanted. That, there's no requirement that it come back.
It's a taxpayer to approve line item.
Yeah, it's just when you, it's just when you collect it through impact fees on new development. Lots of other revenue streams don't have that requirement that it go back.
You can't do maintenance through an impact fee.
Correct. Right. So, we wouldn't be able to replace a roof or put in a new furnace.
Or maintain a rec field or anything like that.
No, not with impact fees. That's taxpayer dollars or...
If you build a new rec field or buy a new flare truck, but you can't...
Right, but you can't take care of what you've got, not through impact fees.
And for capital budgeting purposes, what the Select Board really wants to do with this is identify where we're going to spend money in the future. We also, as a part of that, want to identify where the money's going to come from, but it could come from many different sources. So, if we want to build a new community center, some of that could come from tax dollars, some of it could come from grants, some of it could come from impact fees if someday we were to establish an impact fee for a community center. Maybe because we're suddenly the retirement Mecca of Chittenden County and we have a lot of new development of people who need a senior center and/or that sort of thing. And so, we're going to charge an impact fee for that. Anyway, not to overwhelm you with all this good stuff, but there are items in the existing capital budget, which are the materials that went out in your packet that I'd be happy to, you could talk about. I'd be happy to take your impact input back to the Select Board on, you know, related to the purchase of dump trucks and police cars and that sort of thing. And then, there are these other items that aren't in there today that I'd be happy to take your input back to them to say, "Hey, you know, you guys should start planning for XYZ that was set in the town plan and we think it's time to put money aside."
Not to stay away from the budget question, but back to the impact fees. What, what kind of connection in terms of how much impact fees can be charged or be required for particular projects?
For a particular project.
Or, how does that work?
It's a good question. Legally, it has to be, it's an impact fee because you pay based on your impact. So, for the fire, we have two impact fees now, police and fire, right? So, the police station's the easiest one. We started collecting impact fee to build a new police station. We built it. We took out a bond, a 30-year bond. We will continue to collect impact fees on new development for the life of that bond. But, those impact fees will not pay the bond payment. They pay a tiny portion of it because new development's impact on the need for the new police station was a tiny slice of that. Most of the need for the new police station was just, was already here, right? So, it needs to be paid by the existing tax base and taxpayers. So, it was all calculated that way and there were credits and everything was set up so that that was defensible. There are cases when an impact fee could pay 100% of the cost of a new piece of infrastructure. So, let's say there was a neighborhood that needed some sort of special traffic control, intersection redesign, and, and the benefits and the need, probably more so the need, the need for that infrastructure improvement were entirely related to that new neighborhood. You could charge an impact fee within that, for new development within the neighborhood, that was, that was set at a rate to cover 100% of the cost of that. And we've talked about doing that, maybe not 100%, but a larger share with some of the new development in the village growth area, where a developer might say, "Hey, I need to put in this bridge to connect my development to the north or south. I'm willing to put it in, but it's kind of odd that I have, me developer has to pay for it when it's going to benefit all this other new development happening to the north that also will require it." And the statute actually allows the town to set up an impact fee that can pay a developer back. And so, we collect the funds and as new development happens, we can give those funds back to somebody who had to outlay the whole cost when really it was benefiting an entire sort of developed neighborhood.
What does it take to establish an impact fee to, we have police and fire? What if we wanted to have rec...
Right. I've been advocating for a long time that we ought to have a rec impact fee. And the first step is to have a project in mind, a cost related to that project, and then have it in the capital budget. Once it's formally in the capital budget and it's got a defensible cost and time horizon, then, then an impact fee can be created for it.
Then you figure out how that gets applied to the new development existing.
But, it can, it can only, it's only valid if, if it's being, a portion of it is being driven by the new development. So, schools are a really good example. Many communities have or had school impact fees. Population's increasing, people are moving to town. We have to build, you know, another school or do an expansion. So, we charge an impact fee. Most of those school impact fees are sunsetting and are not going to come back because school enrollment is going down. And any additional sorts of infrastructure that are needed for the schools, there's no justification for it to be paid for by new development. So, that is, that is an important test.
For, for example, though, what if population were going up, school population were going up?
Then, we'd have the situation we had in the 90s when a lot of, a lot of communities created school impact fees.
We need to have an impact fee for this.
Interestingly, when CDU did its expansion in the early 2000s, it was a very expensive project and everybody voted and, you know, you're paying for it, long-term bond. Williston's, Williston had a school impact fee and recalculated it based on that expansion. And they are charging impact fees for that new school expansion.
For their part of that part.
We aren't. So, you know, we've never had a school impact fee. So, new development here is actually cheaper in that sense than it is in Williston because they, they don't have to pay that special impact fee in Heinsburg.
I assume then we'll have another discussion, and maybe it's not us, maybe it's, I think it would be us, about what impact fees do we want to look at adding to what we already have?
Sure, sure. If there are capital budget items that warrant them, it seems like a logical discussion to have.
But, that's not what the Select Board's asking for feedback on now.
Not on impact fees so much. They really want to get the, the step before that. What are the projects that this town is going to spend money on over the next 20 years? And, and, you know, should, how should we be financially planning for that? This is a financial planning exercise. So, you know, you guys don't get to do a lot of that, but it is planning.
I think the trouble I have trying to put this in a capital plan is timeframe. But, you know, it's kind of obvious to me from past experience that we need to back the official map up with a fund.
Some financial planning for those community facilities that we think are going to go in.
To have money on tap when these things do occur and to, you know, for, for proof before an Act 250 board, you know, that the town is actually serious about an official map.
Yeah, that, that criticism was clearly launched by the, by the Hanaford applicants. And then, I think Act 250 bought into that.
Yeah, even though the statute doesn't say anything about that. So, that was invented law, but...
So, that's a good suggestion. And I didn't give you the official map, but if there are specific elements on it that you feel we are, as a community, certain about, or at least certain enough about, those might be good elements to include in the capital budget. The one that comes to my mind is, is Lot 1, the area behind the police and fire station. Now, we already own that land, so from a, from a development standpoint and the, and the regulatory power of the official map, it's not really that significant. But, we've done a fair amount of conceptual level planning for that and it galls me a little bit that, that we aren't doing the financial planning to make that town green a reality. Until we start to do that, it's never going to happen.
Well, and I wonder if, going along with that, 731 on page three, the multi-use municipal parking...
Yeah.
That will accompany it at some point. It's probably going to follow it by quite a bit, but...
No, that's a good one. In fact, it's funny you mention that. Renee and I met with the director of the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. They are updating the regional plan. And one of the things they're updating is a list of transportation projects that are projected out into the future and community infrastructure projects. And this has been on their list, you know, in their prior plan. And they asked us, "Are you still planning to do it? Should it still be on this economic development sort of list?" And we said, "Yeah, but it's probably a good long time away." But, if we could get it in our actual municipal capital plan, you know, I think that would be, I think that would make sense. If, if the Select Board still thinks that it's worth pursuing.
So, an example of an, of an expense that could be charged to an area would be sidewalk plowing piece of equipment that would be the responsibility for the Village Northeast or the Village Northwest, the residential areas, to finance. Or finance some part of...
If, if...
But, only that part of town? Not, that wouldn't come back on other new developments elsewhere in town?
My guess is that the way our Public Works Department, we don't have a Public Works Department, but our pseudo-Public Works Department, our Utilities Department, I guess, operates with that, is that if, if those areas, when those areas build out, we'll definitely need more sidewalk maintenance, infrastructure, equipment. And so, that would be a capital item and could be eligible for impact fees. My guess is we wouldn't have it stationed there only being used in that neighborhood.
Right.
So, you could probably apportion a hefty chunk of the percentage of that cost towards impact fees, but probably not 100%.
Right. But, you could demonstrate that this is going to increase our need for equipment by 75% of what we have.
Right. We're going to need an entirely new piece of equipment, yeah. Mike Anthony has said the same thing about needing a smaller plow truck, not these giant machines that plow the regular roads, but a, one that has more articulation that can do these smaller, narrower village streets. So, that's another one that, you know, would be, would make sense to be thinking about as these, as the village development areas expand. So, John rattled off a couple, as did Joe and Maggie. Anybody else got, so I've got official map items.
And we're supposed to, we've got that on our future agenda to come back to the village growth area. And one of the items in there is Lot 15, a whole bunch of other things.
Sure, yeah.
That we've already said we, we, we need to talk about. We need to do the next refinement of.
Right. Generally, from a, from a regulatory planning front as opposed to a budgeting and financial planning front, but yeah.
Nonetheless, a discussion about that piece of our village area.
Wasn't Lot 1 at one time, we're going to give density bonuses for developers too?
Yeah. There was a, there was a proposal by Brett Grabowski when he was talking about the second phase of the Heinsburg Center project, the phase that will someday go west behind Kenny Drugs. And he needed a density bonus to achieve the residential, the number of residential units that he was interested in doing. And that was, that was my suggestion was, you know, we've got this conceptual plan for Lot 1 that includes a playground for small children. Maybe you could fund that and that could be how you would get that density bonus. Select Board didn't agree, so it didn't happen. Of course, the project stalled too for our lack of water, but the developer went about getting that bonus a different way through more affordable housing instead of that, instead of that community infrastructure piece.
I'm a little confused, Alex. You said that you pulled this action item list together.
Yeah.
These two pages you just gave us. Because we were indicated, Planning Commission was indicated as the lead.
No, no. This particular list I just handed out is just the subset from the town plan of action items that had the capital budget column checked.
Okay.
So, this, anybody could be the lead. But, these, these ones, at least when we wrote the plan, thought these might have a capital budget implication.
Okay. So, there's one, two, there's three that do have us as the lead, as it happens.
I didn't parse that out, so that's okay.
That just happened. Revising the official map is one of them.
Okay.
Working with private landowners to assess existing water control structures and maintaining green spaces within and adjacent to village area.
Yeah, I think there was some thought under that, that first one on page 1, 335, maintaining green spaces within and adjacent to the village area. Maybe, maybe Joe remembers better because... Maybe, maybe Joe remembers better, cause I think this was something, Joe, you've advocated for a lot in the past. But some idea that we might actually, uh, purchase easements or, or actual fee title ownerships to areas around the village to preserve that sort of, uh, edge of more densely developed land to rural countryside. And from a capital budgeting standpoint, you know, those, those kinds of purchases are usually pretty significant in terms of dollars and and it involves a capital thing, i.e. land. So it could be something to go in the capital budget. Although I don't know, anyone knows where we would do those purchases or exactly what they would look like.
But they would be allowed, so to speak. There is a mechanism to do that, right? To purchase those kinds of easements and so forth.
Some of them happen.
Prevents, prevents us from doing that.
No, and in some cases, certain, uh, families in town already did it, you know, on their own. I'm looking at James, cause it's the family that did it, yeah. On the, on the Russell property there, very much that's what happened with the conservation of the land outside of the village district on their property. Yeah, substantially to the north, yep. Well, that's not a bad way to think of it, John. I was thinking you might wanna look at all of these, but certainly makes sense to at least look at the three that the planning commission was tagged as one of the lead.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying we shouldn't look at all of them, Alex, just I noticed that our name was on those three.
Yeah, I don't know about the water control structures one. I, I mean, hopefully you all know what that means, right? We've talked about in the past, these and, and the fact that very, even the landowners that own them often don't know they own them or certainly don't have the wherewithal to keep them up. So I think there was some desire to figure out where they are, who owns them and maybe whether the town or some other entity should take some ownership before they blow out or drain a lake by mistake or what have you. Anything else you think this town should be, uh, putting its pennies aside for, for the future?
Well, they aren't all on this list, but, um, you know, they might be worth considering. Some are on the list, this, this whole sort of shared vehicle, electric charging. Funds for, um, we have basically new approaches to transportation. Was one that I was thinking about, the community center you mentioned. Um, whether that sort of sits in a larger, uh, sort of general, uh, fund, um, of some kind, I'm not sure.
And not just necessarily an elderly center, but a community center.
Multi-generational.
Yeah, I mean, there is sort of fairly active talk at the moment. Specific ideas, um, that are being kicked around. Also, I think, you know, there's been some discussion about some historic structures or structures that have some historic merit in the village. And I think, um, this was not a high priority, I think, when we went through all of these items, but uh, you know, I'm thinking of small amounts of seed money, it's sort of the way the preservation trust works to some degree. That the town, um, is seen as a modest, albeit, uh, you know, proactive agent for uh, encouraging some building owners to, you know, at least explore the possibilities of, um, rehabilitation. I, you know, there's a couple of buildings on the main street here that kind of fit that bill, so to set aside some resources for that purpose potentially. Those were the only things that I was coming up with. I, I, I think what Joe mentioned, the official map and putting our money where our mouth is, uh, on that front. Worthwhile and also I think, you know, the times there are changing and I think the bicycle, pedestrian how we move about the village, um, there's several references to that in this document and, um, sort of continuing to sort of pressure that, I think is, um, is wise. It always stuns me, you know, when I look at like this sheet, you know? What you're often spending on sort of the existing way in which we do business. It's like a staggering sum, you know, when it comes to what we, what we do. And I'm not saying I question it, I'm just sort of saying, hey, this is the way we do it. And then when I look, uh, at those items that, um, we're quote investing our future with, it's a pittance, you know? And I don't think you change things dramatically if you just continue that pattern. Um, if you just continue funding, um, those things that we know are going extinct. And yet, there'd be a hue and cry, wouldn't there, if, uh, we had five holes.
Right, if we didn't take care of the streets.
But it, uh.
Curbed, occurred.
Yes, well, these capital budgets are, um, need to be for a six-year period, you know, the year that you're in and five additional years, but they often look forward, you know, another ten years beyond that. It's difficult when, when the change that you're talking about is a, is a societal change that could be twenty years away. Uh, to actually start budgeting for it before, you know, the shape of it, especially on, um, transportation, right? Because it's hard to imagine, uh, us not continuing to maintain the forty some odd miles of, of town roads, even if we had autonomous vehicles and we had electric vehicles and we had deliveries via drone. We're probably still gonna have people living out there and need a snowplow every single day it snows.
Your housing infrastructure is still out there.
It's still spread out.
So even if you change your transportation to a more public oriented, you know, shared infrastructure, you still have.
No, there's no question, man, you know, we're locked in.
Bring everybody in closer.
What surprises me is the, the provision of, um, critical emergency services, you know, police, fire, uh, and that there's no way to, to do better sort of consolidating of that. Because it just seems silly that each town needs a
All this duplication.
Needs a dup- yeah, all the same duplication, when we all have these mutual aid agreements where they respond jointly every time anyway. But that's been talked about quite a lot. It seems like the only direction we're moving on that is in the dispatch arena. There's, you know, a movement to move towards regional dispatch, but that's pretty small potatoes compared to fire stations and fire trucks. Yeah, cause from a capital budgeting sta- capital budgeting standpoint, when you look at those dollars, the highway department and the fire department are huge. Police is good, is due, but when, whenever we have to buy a fire truck, it's, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. Not, you know, forty thousand dollars for a police car.
Police car, yeah.
So I'm, I'm curious, you have, um, I'm sorry, Rafi, were.
No, no.
So, uh, there's mention of renovations for parts of town hall. Was there any conversation about how many years out we are from needing?
Additional space, yeah. There's been, uh, some conversation, but nothing, nothing that's evolved into a proposal or a real time horizon, uh, for that. Do you think that should be on the list?
I, I have no idea. I, I would say people working here would have a better idea. I mean, I, I expect if.
We're not, we're, I don't feel like we're, uh, in a space crunch right now, um. But I think some of my fellow staff might, might have a different opinion on that, uh. It, it really would be related to adding substantial new staff. And if we added, you know, even just a couple more staff members, if they had to work in this building, we would have problems, for sure. But, you know, the police station is fully staffed and probably, we don't anticipate that getting any bigger or needing to.
There's growth space inside it already.
That's true too. Um, the highway department obviously is getting a new, you know, brand new building right now, um.
Don't we have to put money together for the salt shed?
The salt shed is, we're hoping to get a grant to cover a good chunk of that and to have it be built as a part of this highway garage construction project.
That money comes from the state transportation department?
Yeah, good question. Uh, I believe it runs through Vtrans. It's related to, the grant that we're applying for is related to, um, the Transportation Alternatives program, I think, um. And it's, uh, it's related to stormwater. That's, that's part of where the money is coming from for those salt, salt sand shed constructions, um.
Are we gonna be able to spread salt after these new permits we have to get?
I, I haven't heard any that we wouldn't be able to. Uh, I've heard some scuttlebutt about salt loading in streams in the lake and whether things might change, but I haven't heard anything serious that, that they are gonna change.
Is the paved road better than a dirt road?
With regard to what?
Stormwater, maintenance, any.
Um, my, my perspective, Mike Anthony, I think would probably be better at answering this than I would. You know, as long as he was sitting next to Andrea and then you had a, you know, I maintain the road and I understand how, um, water quality works cause they're kinda different, but, um, I, I feel like paved roads do a much better job of um, preserving the integrity of our streams and lakes because they don't erode. And you don't keep throwing more gravel on them every year, cause they lose an inch of gravel into the, into the ditches and the streams. So I think from that standpoint, they're better, especially on the, on the hill roads.
Probably use less salt too, right? Cause they probably thaw off quicker.
That I don't know. Mike would be a much better person to answer that. I, I don't know that.
Is that something we should be saving money for, for?
To pave? We have, I mean, this whole capital budget includes an item to just, uh, repave our existing paved roads. But it doesn't, it doesn't include anymore for new paving. Um, and that's been such a lightning rod in this town that, um, it doesn't surprise me that the select board isn't actively budgeting to pave additional roads. But it, it's something that they might wanna think about. I know Mike has been pressing for years to pave sections of the hill roads. The sections that he has the hardest time maintaining, cause they keep washing into the, you know, down the hill. Uh, so that's, that's worth bringing up.
Yeah, to, to answer your question, I sing, and just kinda my anecdotal evidence. You go up to Underhill Center and, and you drive the State Park Road or Stevensville Road, the steeper sections they've paved and the flatter sections they have. And, and the steeper sections in the winter, they do seem better. I always kind of breathe a little bit of sigh of relief coming down from Stevensville Parking Lot, you know, once I'm on pavement, so.
But the life cycle cost, it's not clear to me that, um, you know, how that part of the equation goes. Because pavement is a, is a very large cost upfront and then much less maintenance for ten years. But then the next time you have to resurface it, it's a huge cost again. Yeah. I think Maggie, to answer your question, maybe the biggest area where we have, um, where we should be doing having better ideas with the fire station, you know, we've had plans to expand that and those got shelved and now there's some question about whether it's going to expand in that location or whether it might find a new home somewhere and build another station. So whereas if we add many more staff here at town hall, we'll probably need to think about renovations and or an annex. The most clear and present issue is the fire station and whether we're gonna expand it or not and how that's all gonna work.
And none of the money that would be spent to study it, any, any of these can come from an impact fee?
Well, actually, no, we have spent a good chunk of our fire impact fees in the, uh,
In the planning.
Architectural planning and the site planning for that expansion of that building. And no one's challenged us, so we, we've used the money. So yeah, you can use impact fees in that regard.
So you might then decide we're gonna do this project, we need to plan for that. So we need to have impact fees to pay for that planning for this project that we wanna do. But we don't know how much it's gonna cost yet and quite what it is and so forth, but we need the money to get to there. That's the impact, that's the impact fee.
That would be a little harder to justify the impact fee without having a clear capital budget item, but, um, yeah, potentially.
Then you could just pull one out of a hat and put it in the.
The key is what you're planning for. If you're planning for something that is not really related to, isn't being driven by new development, then the impact fee as a revenue source is off the table to begin with.
What's the impact fee for the fire station right now?
It is, it's for the expansion of the building to hold, uh, a ladder truck or what they, they're calling a quint. Because it, it, it's not just a ladder truck, it actually has five different functions. The, the ladder portion of it is just the one everybody's familiar with, uh.
And, and the ladder portion is the part that the fire department has been pushing for, a ladder. You don't have a vehicle with a ladder mounted on it that you can raise up, you know, parked on the street out front. And save the baby from the upstairs bedroom.
But like the newest truck that they purchased just this last year, I think, when they purchased that truck, it, it, it'll limit, it basically took the place of two trucks. Um, I'm not sure if the quint, if we were ever to get one, might also take the place of another truck if it might help with consolidation. Probably not, I think they've consolidated enough, but they keep talking about it as a multi-function vehicle, so. Not just a ladder truck, but that's what it's for, yeah. The impact fee specifically for fire station addition to hold that truck.
About the, uh, wastewater upgrades, um, sounded like upgrades would, would likely be, be needed.
Yeah, definitely, and, and to the tune of, you know, six to ten million dollars.
But there's no, I don't see anything near about that.
Yeah, I don't either.
I mean, that's, that's kind of a hard one. I mean, they, they mentioned schools in that write-up, which is a different budget area as well, but when you talk about sewer and water, that's kind of a, a village.
It's, what's been confusing about it is that the, the, it's an enterprise account. So the, the water and wastewater systems are not, don't, the, the funding for them do not come out of the general fund. Regular taxpayers do not pay for that, with those water and sewer systems, the users do. And so there's a whole separate budget for the water and wastewater system that the select board sets and then rates get set based on that. Um, with that said, it's clearly a capital, a piece of capital infrastructure that is, is critical for the town. I think the select board understands that and they like the capital budget to somehow reflect that. Um, or at least have a separate capital budget within the enterprise fund.
Items over like four hundred thousand.
Have to be, have to go to bond. True, but that doesn't mean they can't appear in the capital budget. They should still appear in the capital budget with a note saying, you know, we intend to spend this money, but we're gonna have to go out and, uh, get a voter approval first. So I think they're planning on making the tie-in, but I'll make a note of that, James, just to remind them that somehow, even if it's not in the budget, there should be a big asterisk saying, see the number at the bottom of this capital budget? It's dwarfed by what we actually plan to spend on our wastewater plan.
What about, um, and I don't know if you can mark this as capital budget, but consulting services? Meaning about revisions of zoning codes or any other of the town? Businesses that would, could leverage a consultant in one way or another. You know, it can be specific, it can be general, I don't know how to word it, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you mean. We, we have been, um, in, we have been setting money aside through a capital reserve. And we have been setting money aside through a capital reserve. Um, so the annual budget has a line item, you know, on the planning department that says transfer to capital reserves. And we put put some money in there so that out of the annual operating budget. Certain slice will get put in a bank account and saved, and we're trying to save up so we can do this comprehensive zoning rewrite, for example. Um. The nomenclature can get a little confusing, it it's not clear that that's actually a capital budget item.
Right.
Because it's not a capital item, right? We're not buying a truck or a piece of land, it's 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 sort of intellectual services that we need to pay for. So I don't know that it would appear in the capital budget, but it's still something that we have a capital or a reserve fund set aside. To do, and if the project's expensive enough. It probably should show up somewhere in that realm of what we plan to be spending over the longer period, I'm just not sure exactly where it falls. In in these documents.
Cuz it's sort of consulting services for capital land, right?
Well, if it's a zoning, if it's a zoning rewrite, it's not, but um, you know, if it's consulting services to uh design a building or. Uh, something like that, it would be.
Yeah, if you can do planning for a project and include that in the cost for.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as a capital improve, uh, as a capital improvement, therefore use it to. Get an impact fee. Planning, you get somebody to help you do planning, that's a consultant.
Yep. I will add it to the list of things to consider. Consultant fees for special projects or larger projects.
Well, projects that have an impact on our our whole community, not just. A project to add. For one, one function. Uh, wouldn't it, wouldn't it have to be any anything that the town would need to operate as a town? And by that, I mean, under the select board's responsibility of running the town.
Mm-hmm, sure. So I have a list of. Eleven items to call to their attention. Um, I think I will also give them this and just say, hey, you wanted the town plan to, you know, have a look at it. Hey, guess what? There's an easy way to do that, here's a spreadsheet, you can look at it um. I'm assuming none of us actually have any dollar amounts to tag to any of these eleven items I wrote down, right? We're just brainstorming here, it's not like we know, aside from the lot one where we do in fact have an estimate. I don't think we have dollar amounts for charging stations or community centers or paving. Texas Hill Road or any of that sort of thing.
Planning for an expansion renovation of this building.
Right.
Are you asking us, shall we give you a number? Shall we just?
I'm just sort of being somewhat cheeky that if anybody had had an idea uh or had a number, I would include it. With the I, with the actual project idea, I didn't anticipate anybody was.
As as the VLCT or whoever it was document said, you know, that's the realm of.
Right.
You know, engineers and architects and.
Yep.
Yep.
Alex, you said six to ten million for the way forward.
That's a number, yeah, good point. And there's that lot one number, yep.
I don't know what you did, it doesn't really answer your question, but um, you know, as far as replacement for capital projects.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we, a bunch of us uh. Quite a while back, built the um skating rink in South Burlington, Karen's Arena. And um. Certainly wasn't me, but there were a few bankers on that committee and ultimately a board and. You know, as a, for instance, we took um the value of that project. And divided it by the um. Uh, period of amortization of the mortgage that we had on it, it was a real advantageous mortgage, but. And then in our capital reserve fund, every year we took one thirtieth of. The value of the building and put it in our capital reserve fund, now we were fortunate enough to be able to do that, we were a nonprofit, but. We, we. And um. Well, that was actually sort of, I don't know if you guys remember the issue with the city of South Burlington, they were eyeing our kitty.
Yeah.
And um.
Belonged to the town, we should be able to use it.
It did belong to the town, but the town manager thought so, and so they went after that money. Um, which. Uh, actually, we clung to pretty aggressively and um, and it was funny because not too long after that. Um, the chiller on one of our rinks broke down and it was about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure. Which we happen to have, you know.
Yep.
I always thought that was a pretty enlightened formula for um, sort of, you know, it's like the town hall, okay, uh. You know, counting on some period of time whereby you basically replace it in its entirety.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that becomes your reserve fund is really, I'm I'm sure in private enterprise, there's more of that going on um. We don't tend to do it, we generally throw paltry sums at these things because of other pressures, but.
That and because we have, we do get very advantageous interest rates. And so rather than have today's generation pay for tomorrow's improvement.
Yeah.
We have tomorrow's generation pay for today's improvement. Uh, by taking, by 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 having debt instead of ha- instead of paying for things out of savings and. In my limited experience uh doing this in Westford when I was on the board there, uh. I think a blended approach is the right way to do it, you know, you 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 make sure you have enough savings to cover the chiller. That uh could be coming, um, but you don't, I don't know that you necessarily. Put aside enough money every year for thirty years to replace this whole building, uh. Cuz that would be a lot of money, plus if this building fell down entirely in thirty years, that would be.
A big shock.
That would be odd, uh.
All those dance parties on the main floor.
But if the slate roof for some reason, you know, went, uh, that would be a huge expense, so. Having some significant chunk of monies, yeah, it's a good idea.
The vinyl, yeah.
I remember past select boards, uh, Randy Bulk, uh, in particular, was always very reluctant to to do these capital reserves. Cuz he felt like we oughta pay for things when they were needed, not not. Stick it to the taxpayer today for something that might get paid for tomorrow when they don't even live here anymore.
Unfortunately, that uh method tends to affect your perception of the need.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep, the the public feels like, well, we've been going along just fine for ten years without any big expenses. What do you mean, we have to pay for a new town highway garage, what, well, I don't wanna pay for that, yeah. Yeah, well, that's part of what capital budgeting is all about and and reserves in particular is to try to smooth out the the uh.
Yeah.
The tax rate and and expenditures over time. Keep everybody a little more, keep keep uh budgeting a little more predictable.
But isn't it true with a lot of budgets, they wanna spend it all every year so that. They make sure they can get the same amount that's all in here?
Uh, yeah, yeah, which is why capital budgeting is good, cuz if you're, if you're setting. Sorry, not capital budgeting, but capital reserves are good, if you're setting aside money to pay for something in the future. Um, you do set aside that whole amount and you just keep going as opposed to these up and down sorts of things, but. Yeah, there's a little bit of that that goes on towards the end of the fiscal year. It's also because, I'll tell you as a department head, a lot of us are. Have internalized the the mantra from the select board and town town administrators over time, which is pinch every penny you can. Don't spend money if you don't have to, and so when you get to May and you realize, ah, I did a really good job, I didn't, I didn't spend all that stuff. You think, okay, well, what did I put off or what, you know, what could I spend? To uh, to make sure everything is still running smoothly.
Alright, other discussion on uh capital budget. Right, I think we move on to minutes then. So minutes from last time, like. Anyone have comments or updates on the minutes? Fairly quiet, have emotion.
I move.
Second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reposed? Extinctions?
Stay in.
That would be me.
Okay, alright, I think the minutes pass, that was correct. Alright, um, on to other business. So yeah, Hannaford's, you had town in Richmond, town plan, public hearing. I guess the other thing is the planning commission report is due by the fifteenth, I guess we gotta work on that.
Let me know, Joe, if you need any stats or information to put that together.
Yeah, I probably do, I haven't looked at it yet, Allison, as normal.
Yeah, he's, sorry, non-planning commission business, but the the development review board chair is sitting across from me. Yes, Mitch is gonna get you some stats um by Friday, so that you you'll have him to put your report together for the DRB. This is the town report.
When's the deadline?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. Now, the new person putting it together this year, Renee's been doing it for several years and finally, now that she's a town administrator. Delegated, so Ann Thomas is putting it together. Could have a real historical slant to it.
Oh, you mean she's gonna use last year's reports, right?
No, a hundred years ago, the report from a hundred years ago.
Just change a few words.
So the Richmond, the Richmond plan, I think I emailed you that, it's again, we're just being notified cuz they're having a public hearing on the update to their plan. And I uh, I think I sent you that, so if you have questions, let me know, but otherwise, just FYI. And then the Hannaford update, as I said in the message or the email, uh, fairly pat. Uh, you saw my missives to the community about the decision from the Supreme Court, so. Uh, the update is that the court's decision, as I understand it, is uh, that. Of the two permits that were on appeal to the Supreme Court, which were the town's site plan approval. And the Act two fifty approval, uh, the Act two fifty permit was remanded back to the lower court. For several reasons, two of which included arguments that the town raised on appeal to the Supreme Court. Those being our contention that a traffic light at Mechanicsville Road should not be a foregone conclusion, the court actually. The lower court had required one, um, Supreme Court said uh that the lower court should think about that some more. Um, and the other issue that the town raised was with the post-construction traffic study. Uh, that that uh we felt was necessary in case, once Hannaford was built. The traffic didn't behave as their models predicted and more improvements were necessary. And the Supreme Court uh also told the lower court to revisit that issue and give the town an opportunity to make its case. Uh, it was also sent back to lower court um. Because of an issue having to do with stormwater and testimony given by uh responsible growth Heinsberg's expert on that. That wasn't properly considered by the lower court. Um, so that was one outcome of the decision, the the project got remanded back, so. Uh, it doesn't, it wasn't denied, it wasn't approved, it just basically said, we're kicking it back to lower court to take more testimony on these things. Lower court could come to the exact same decision, could change its mind, we won't know until they reconvene. Uh, the second thing that the court, the Supreme Court did was overturn the town's site plan approval. And uh, very much on a, on a technical setback issue. Uh, and so it's likely if Hannaford wants to pursue the project, that it'll be back in front of the development review board. It's possible that it wouldn't be back in the, in front of the development review board, uh, our town attorney said. There's a chance that Hannaford could make uh an argument at the lower court level that um, it could be dealt with there. Uh, but it doesn't sound like that's the way it should work, so we'll just have to wait and see. There's a status conference where the lower court, I, mid-December is what I understand, I think the fourteenth. Um, and so we hope to know more then as to whether uh, how things are gonna proceed. The big question is, is Hannaford just gonna pull out and and abandon the project? And they, I don't think they've made that decision yet, I think their attorney was quoted in one of the papers as saying that they were gonna. Proceed and go ahead.
And Digger, I read that.
But I, that's not the impression I've gotten from a couple of their. Associates that have been in our office doing some research in the last week or so, it sounded like. There's some due diligence going on on Hannaford's part to see, you know, what other permits would be necessary, how do they address these issues that? That the Supreme Court raised, um, so I. I expect they will con- they will continue with the process, but I, we won't know for certain, probably for a couple more weeks until that status conference.
What, what, when would you know whether or not they need to go back to the DRB?
I think we'll, I hope we'll know at that status conference.
Would, would the entire, I would the entire, I mean, would they need to start from scratch or?
So I'm not an attorney, but I think it would be a brand new application. You know, heard under the current regs, not the ones from two thousand nine or whatever they were, that they were reviewed under that, I think. You know, the application was, would be over and and it would start fresh.
Brand new one.
Yep. But we'll see, I, because there are so many interrelated parts in this, in this project and various appeals. You know, maybe there's some legal mechanism by which it it might not work the way I'm thinking it will, so I really need to hear. From that status conference.
It's just so interesting because if they have to go back to environmental court, good lord, how long is that, how long would that?
It's been seven years, that literally to this month, I think, it's been seven years since they came into our office upstairs and plunked the big application down. So I would imagine, this is speculative, but I would imagine if they came back to the DRB and started over, it would go. It took us two years to approve that project, I imagine it would go much faster than that. Um, but I imagine it would also be appealed if it were approved. Well, I would imagine it would be appealed either way, if the DRB denied it, it would be appealed, if the DRB approved, it would be appealed, and it would go back to environmental court and then. You know, on from there, I doubt it would take another seven years, but um, could take multiple years more. If they decide to pursue it, so we'll see, I don't know if they will or not.
So I I have a question, and I don't know, this isn't a agenda change, but it's it's along this line, um. Can we review as part of our housekeeping that section of the regulation?
Which section is that?
Uh, three eight three, which talks about lot size and dimension in that district.
Uh, sure, but.
Square footage cap?
That's where I was going.
So my recommendation would be not to go there, I mean, the purpose of these housekeeping changes was to uh, address. Issues that we've had on a list for a long time of things that we need to clarify. The the issue about square footage caps did come up after the Hannaford issue and we actually had a planning commission meeting, I think. Where we talked about, should the, should the grocery, should should the cap on retail, which is twenty thousand square feet. Everywhere except in the commercial district, should that actually be increased for grocery stores? Because it's hard to build a twenty thousand square grocery store, at least for these big companies, uh, and we didn't come to any conclusion on that. Um. I would recommend that you save that discussion for your village growth rezoning, that's a, that's a major policy decision. That is appropriate to discuss in the context of that larger, um, that larger project that, you know, is gonna soak up most of twenty eighteen for you. Uh, for example, Jan Blumstrom, uh, who used to own energy and still owns all the land around it. Uh, is in the master planning phase and a part of her uh project, they're interested in having more office space. And they've also been somewhat interested in maybe the potential for a hotel, and so they suggested to your board, I think this is part of the record at some point. That you change the allowed uses in the Village Northeast District to allow for standalone offices and hotels.
Hotels.
And what you told them and what I reiterated to them just this week, when they asked again was. Um, that's probably not an appropriate change to make in these housekeeping changes, but it's absolutely part of the conversation for this. Larger village growth area rezoning effort, uh, cuz Jeff Glassberg, their development consultant, emailed me and said, hey, thanks for the notice about the housekeeping changes. I saw that you've changed something about B and Bs and. I saw that you've changed something about B and Bs and Inns. You know, is this going to help us in the issue we raised, and could it be tweaked to do so?" And I said, "No, this is not designed for the issue you raised. That's a separate, larger issue, and, you know, planning commission intends to talk about that more as part of the village growth project." Um, I think changing the cap, um, of twenty thousand square feet, or introducing a cap into the commercial district along those lines would be similar. You know, it'd be a larger conversation you'd wanna have, not as part of housekeeping. But if there is something that's not working in the commercial district, that, you know, is clear and evident, and is a minor change, it could be thrown into housekeeping, I think.
For, for the, I'm assuming the two of you who were around when that cap was instituted?
No.
No? That cap was not instituted.
That was preceded you?
And keep in mind, we were, we were actually thinking about going in the opposite direction. I mean, the, the conversation at that time was, okay, we, we basically have an unlimited square footage, you know, in the commercial area, right? We got twenty thousand feet in, in the new area. If someone, you know, AKA, you know, Latmans wanted to compete, right? Right, then they don't have a spot to do that, should we increase, you know, square footage in, in the, the, the village growth area, you know, northwest or whatever, right, to allow that? And, you know, I, I don't know how long the discussion was, I don't think it was very long.
One meeting.
But, um, you know, we couldn't come to a decision on that. Obviously, there, you know, um, the way I remember it, there are arguments about that time. I mean, we, we got, we got one big grocery store we're fighting about right now. Do we really need two grocery stores in this town of, of that size, et cetera? Um, and so, I, you know, I, we didn't, we didn't come to a decision that we'd increase it. We left Village Northwest the way it was.
There was that conversation, if you wanna, I can find it for you and give you the minutes from the meeting. It was an interesting conversation. It went beyond just grocery stores, because it was, this cap in the, in most of the village is related to retail. And, and it's twenty thousand square feet. So, we had at that time a discussion about, um, just big box stores in general, right? This is, this was a hot topic for a lot of communities, right? Should, you know, what, should there be limits at all, and what should they be? And, you know, what is a, what is a dollar store? What is a Walmart, all of those things? And, uh, you'll see, uh, that the town plan actually mentions this specific issue in the, I believe it does, in one of the action items for the village, is that we think about modifying the, that cap for grocery stores specifically. Because that's where the conversation ended at that meeting, was, wow, we kinda like having that cap for most other, for, for most retail, but maybe grocery stores are a different beast, and it should be twenty-four thousand, or it should be thirty thousand, or something like that.
Which town planned, the current?
The one we just adopted, yeah. Yeah, I'll find it for you.
So, I know that the conversation was going on at the same time with the village steering committee. And it was mostly the sort of, call it, uh, the exceptions that were, we weren't, you know, part of the conversation with, um, sort of the growth areas. We were mostly looking at the village and, um, you know, patterns of growth and, um, the suggestions, you know, I'm not sure how far they went, but it was sort of, the fact that the Commerce District, whatever one calls it, Commerce Street area, was such a notable exception, um, was what sort of raised our attention at that time. This is pre-Hannaford. And the impulse was to sort of, at least make the zoning and the size of structures somewhat more uniform throughout the village. And I would, I would say now, as an observation, I mean, it's, it's not sort of an absolute sentiment necessarily, but I would say when you go to other communities and look at patterns of growth, and, um, um, generally, I would say, um, opinions about that pattern of growth are often centered on, uh, not necessarily the entire size of a particular project or a building, but at least the perception, um, of that size. You know, I mean, certainly when you go to Williston, um, that's, that's the sort of most notable example. But even if you go to Colchester and some of those developments that are happening now, that, those new developments, and why they don't necessarily curry the kind of general public favor, it's because of the size footprint of structure. So, I, I think when we come to this conversation, it's really worth paying attention to, because, you know, there's a big difference, say, for example, between a forty thousand square foot building that's one story, and a forty thousand square foot building that is two stories, or a forty thousand square foot building that is made up of two segments clearly identifiable, that are each twenty thousand square feet. And I'm just using that numerically as an example.
Yeah, I think the Kenny Drugs building is actually a, an example of that. That was, wanted to be an eleven thousand square foot box.
Single built.
And after a lot of angst and, you know, hand wringing, it, it's still an eleven thousand square foot box, but it's, at least it was attempted to articulate it with different roof lines to make it not seem like such a monolith.
Unfortunately, you can't always rely on that. It's sometimes just easier to say, "Here's the limit."
So, so this is my, my take on it, and it kinda goes to Roff's a little bit. Um, so the village steering committee, obviously, when that came out, um, weren't in big favor of it, primarily because of, in our opinion at the time, or mine, it didn't fit the character of the neighborhood. And, um, it wasn't because it was a Hannaford or a grocery store, it was just the size of it. I would even argue that grocery stores are getting smaller. And to give examples of City Market in Burlington, I think it's only sixteen thousand square feet.
Yeah, but the new one they built is much bigger.
The new one's bigger.
Not much bigger.
But it's, it's not to serve, it's to serve a, a lar, much larger area than just our town. And Hannaford always said, "It's to serve Heinsberg."
No.
Not necessarily points out.
And they never intended that, to serve Heinsberg.
That's what they said.
That's what they said.
Anyway, I guess my concern is...
Nobody bought.
You know, we say it's something that needs to be planned, but it's something that's been talked about at multiple committees for seven years, and it's still not resolved. And, yeah, I just think we're leaving a gap open for that to still be open. And once a shovel goes in the ground, you're not gonna change it.
But what, what, so you're talking about introducing a square footage limit in the commercial district?
Extending, extending the cap.
Extending what the cap of twenty thousand, extending it into the Commerce Street area. So, that's the cap, just like the rest of the village growth district is twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah, and I think that if, I mean, I think it's worth having that conversation, but I think the moment you drop that, when we're about to have a public hearing on these supposedly minor housekeeping changes, a community that was almost fifty-fifty divided on this Hannaford project would, I mean, they, they would see it as a little, a little ICBM just dropped into the conversation, right?
Housekeeping, housekeeping is, is, you know, dusting the, dusting the knickknacks. It's not, you know...
Buying new knickknacks, getting larger knickknacks?
It, it, it's not building a new wing, you know?
Well, because it would have the effect of, of, of submarineing that project. If it were.
No, I, I disagree.
Not for that reason.
Not for that. There's no reason that grocery store couldn't go in at twenty thousand square feet when the average retail grocery store being built is under twenty thousand square feet.
Well, and I'm not arguing that point at all, but, but the project as proposed, it would be, it would be submarineed.
I, I think that, I think that these kind of changes need to be made in the light of day, not in the...
I'm not gonna have a public hearing on it.
You were proposing it as part of the housekeeping changes.
I don't care what we propose it as, I just think it needs to be proposed sooner rather than later.
That's fine, I mean, keep in mind our other discussions, Jeff. I mean, we've, we've gone, you know, is this board as, you know, doing grand things? You know, that, you know, a lot of housekeeping changes, or a big, you know, a big R1 agricultural thing. I mean, we can, we can change the way this board operates and do, you know, I'll put it in quotes, because this isn't small, but it's small in, in terms of, you know, it's a single regulation. I mean, we can, you know, we can meet on this early in the, early in the year. If we come to a consensus, right, you can, you know, we can, we can just, you know, go to a public hearing with a very small set of regulations that we wanna change.
Yeah, and you talked about that at your last meeting. Jeff had brought up, what was that term you used with programming, the agile development? And some of you said it might be nice to do, you know, some of this stuff sooner rather than later, rather than waiting till the end of twenty eighteen when we have it all nailed down?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're talking about a, a, a public hearing, you know, at our next meeting. Do we really have time to do anything, you know, in, in terms of, you know, figuring out public opinion and, and getting, you know, getting the discussion before writing something very quickly and, and trying to make it to that public hearing? I don't think so. I don't, I don't think that's the way this board should be doing business. I think we should be doing business in the light of day, right, with ample discussion.
Well, the, the light of day would be, you know, if something like that were to reach the select board, where it would be, you know, that's where people could come out and have their, have their say.
They're a public hearing. Haste, haste. A policy has, uh, has consequences.
Which would be as big of a deal if that project wasn't there?
Uh, I'm not, I, I'm not even thinking about there or not there right now. I'm thinking about the way this board does business.
Okay. I, I just think extending a standard that goes around the village steering committee makes sense.
They can disagree with me, and we can, we can do this, but, you know, I, I, I really, I mean, we're, we're trying to represent the community. Um, I wanna make sure that we're very open about what we do, and we give time for feedback.
But isn't that...
Well, I think we can do that. I think we can do that, and yet still, I think perhaps pay heed to some of what are perceived to be some of the more pressing issues, um, in the village growth area in particular. Like, I, I agree with you. I think we oughta be transparent, I think we oughta be, um, good in the way that we practice this. But I think we can also pay attention to some of those things that are, um, basically, um, things that really will affect, I think, the character and growth of this particular village. And we have a hiatus period, and I think we oughta pay attention to some of those things in a, in a, in a proper fashion.
Alex, what can you tell us about when, uh, when a change to the zoning regulations would affect a project coming in?
Good question.
You know, where, where in the process is it, is it, this change is pending, or, or what?
Yeah, good question. So, um, by statute, um, all of your good work, which is where the work really does happen for, you know, new regulations, new town plans, uh, doesn't create anything new under the sun. It's when the select board warns a public hearing on a zoning change that any applications that come in after that public hearing warning have to play by those rules, even before the rules are adopted. They may never be adopted, but once the hearing's warned, you have to play by those rules. Um, and then, should those rules be adopted, then they become permanent, and you are playing by the rules. If the rules end up being rejected, then the project gets, has the opportunity to be re-reviewed.
But what if you have a pending application? I'm talking specifically about Hannaford's, because they applied for something seven years ago. The rules back then are still in effect.
An applicant vests themselves when they apply for a substantially, with a substantially complete application. So, for a, for a project like Hannaford, or any business that comes in and maybe needs a site plan approval, perhaps a conditional use approval in front of the DRB, their, their initial application is it. And, and that's, that's, the, the regs that exist at that date are what, are what they will be reviewed under. Um, and that actually happened in the Hannaford case. I think they applied in the end of two thousand ten, and we changed the regs in two thousand eleven? Um, and they, so they were reviewed under the, the previous regs, which were actually from two thousand nine, because they, even though they took two years in the process, they, they vested at that point. So, the, the upshot of this is, for example, these housekeeping changes. Um, if any applicant puts in an application sometime in the next couple of months, before the select board even takes these up, and then eventually warns a hearing, these housekeeping changes won't have any impact on those projects.
But when the select board does warn a hearing, they will.
That's when, if they apply after that date, yep, they will.
So, we could, in terms of what Joe was saying, and the suggestions you were making about breaking projects down into little pieces, we could take a couple of items and make, and make a, uh, build a public hearing around it for ourselves.
Yep.
Make any other final changes, submit it to the select board. Request them to please move this along and make their decision.
Yep.
Once they did that, that would be pending. That would be in effect for any further application. So, there is a process that we could go more quickly on these things beyond the housekeeping changes.
Right, yeah, outside of this, this current round, which you, which you're having a hearing on, um, in a couple of weeks. Yep.
Yeah, I would, you know, I would encourage, if we're gonna do that, you know, let's, let's get the agenda out there, right, for the public. So, you know, just like we send our agendas out in, in time for the public to, to know what we're gonna talk about.
Yep.
Right, you know, put that as an agenda item, you know, let the public, um, hear the public out. Might be actually nice to get, you know, more than join out.
I think it would be. I mean, you, you said it was fifty-fifty. What do you base that on? I have no idea. How do any of us know?
I base it on the response at the time. And then, um, the town, the survey that we did for the town plan in two thousand fourteen, we asked the question. We, we asked, "What do you think of recent commercial projects in town? Specifically, Kenny Drugs, uh, what else do we say? UVM Medical, or, or Jiffy Mart?" We listed, I think, three or four, and one of them was the proposed Hannaford project, even though it hadn't been built yet. And it was funny, the response was, um, very positive response on all of the other commercial projects, and again, fifty-fifty split on the Hannaford project. And then they went, we went on to ask them about, "What about, uh, recent residential projects?" And the response was actually quite split and/or negative on that. But on the commercial side, it was like, "Yep, Kenny Drugs is good. Uh, this, this other commercial project is good, and that proposed Hannaford's still right down the middle." At, at least, that's my recollection of the results. It's all on the website, so if you wanna take a look. Interestingly, though, um, the temperature may have cooled enough, because when I posted that, that message, you know, alerting people as to the result of the Supreme Court case, and Catherine Goldsmith from Responsible Growth Heinsberg posted a message the very same day. It just happened to come out at the same time. Nothing, there was zero, zero response. I just assumed that the, the flames would start to kindle again, but...
Or maybe, uh...
Jeff, do you wanna suggest that we talk about the square footage thing in the upcoming meeting?
Yeah, if we can get it in, I mean, I think we have our public hearing next meeting, right?
Yeah, so your calendar is, public hearing on the thirteenth, um, no meeting on the twenty-seventh. Your first meeting in January will be to decompress from the public hearing and make any additional changes to the housekeeping stuff. Um, and it's un, it, it's always unclear how long that will take. If you get substantial public feedback at the hearing, you might have to take a couple of meetings to talk through it. But if not, um, it would be your, probably your first meeting in February, that you could launch into village growth stuff again. And if you want this to be, you know, high on the, you know, first on the list, I can schedule that.
Would it be possible to put it in for that, uh, second meeting in January, where we are decompressing from the hearing? And it may turn out that we can get to it? And if we don't get to that item, we move it to the next meeting, something like that? We've done that on a bunch of meetings.
I don't even care if you wanna split the first meeting and the second meeting fifty-fifty.
Yeah, you can do that. You guys had talked about, you know, doing a little back and forth with different topics, so, um, yeah, that's fine. I'm happy to schedule that. It, it will be good to, uh, be at the December thirteenth public hearing on the housekeeping, though, and see whether there are some real huge comments, issues that come up there.
Sure.
I did get three responses on the, on the illuminated sign.
Oh, you did?
Uh, I did, so that was kinda nice. I don't know if I'll get more.
So, we should, yeah, we should propose.
I'd like to propose that it gets on the first available, whatever we just said.
Second January meeting.
Availability to be discussed.
Well, like Joe said, I can put it on the first one and the second one.
Yeah, because it's, I just think, you know, regardless of stances, I just think that conversation about, I mean, it's what's grown this whole village steering design committee and all this stuff, has all come out of, you know, that.
That project.
And I just...
I wanna be clear, I, I got no problem with the conversation, I just wanna make sure that we're...
No, I agree with that.
Everything, everything that we do should be a... Everything, everything that we do should be and will be.
Okay, so here's what it says, just so you know, it's action item three point one point one. Says investigate existing optimum development densities as well as proper balance of various uses in the village. Consider additional non-retail commercial industrial uses in the Village Northeast zoning district to complement currently allowed uses. For example, office as a principal use, inn or hotel, et cetera. So, that's where the, the suggestion from that landowner was recognized in the plan, so you're authorized to go look at that. The next sentence says, consider a larger size cap for grocery stores in the village and the Village Northwest zoning districts, rather than the existing twenty thousand square foot limit applied to all retail uses in these districts. And that's a result of that one meeting we had, where, that's where we, we ended the meeting was.
What's the date of that meeting?
Um, I'll find it for you.
You can get us, you can get us the.
I'll get you the minutes.
Minutes from that.
Yep.
Let me ask this, so, so what you, what you've just read me is, is a mandate that says we, you know, we, we're empowered to think about increasing size limits. Right, the conversation, I think the way it's gonna go in January is, is not increasing size limits, but decreasing size limits.
Well, I don't know, I think it could go any number of directions, right? It could be making a more consistent size limit across the whole village area, and maybe that size limit goes up from twenty to twenty-four.
Town plan is the empowerment document, right, that gives us the, the bounds of, of, of where we can go, right? Is this within bounds?
I, so my, my advice to you would be, sure, depending on where you end with the conversation, you might wanna have another gut check. But I don't think that having the conversation is, is a bad idea, um, and just, you know, seeing where, where it goes.
So, we have the authority to change any square footage requirements, raise them or lower them. We have that authority, whether we do that.
I mean, I, that, well, that's, that's my question.
Yeah, what Joe's saying is your, the town plan specifically empowers you to go in one direction with these caps. If you wanna go in the other direction, uh, it should be based on the town plan as well. But I think there's ample justification, not only in that one that I read, uh, but also in other ones that we talked about, uh, design standards and, and refining those, and that's a high priority action item from the plan too, so I think you're safe. I think you, what would not be a good idea is to have the conversation and not recognize this one explicit thing that you are supposed to consider. So, when you're having the conversation about the size cap, make sure you also talk about whether it should go up in the village, in the Village Northwest District, you may decide it doesn't need to, but at least have the conversation. But I'll send you the, I'll send out the minutes from that uh meeting on size gaps, a couple of years back.
Okay, interesting discussion, more to come. All right, any other business? Motion adjourned.
I thought it was great, how James just skipped a step, let's just get to the.
The fact that you're here, what's going on in your throat right now is impressive.